No, read off my phone because this is what the students do, so I figured that was appropriate. Dr. Rudby, members of the Newtown Board of Education, community members, and most importantly, the staff, families, and students of Newtown High School. I'm honored to have been selected as the next principal of Newtown High School. I feel very fortunate to have Dr. Rudby, the past principal and current interim principal, Dave Roach, in my corner as my mentors. I believe that to be a strong leader, you need to have people that are committed to follow you. Newtown High School has an exceptional staff, complete with teachers who lead our students through a rigorous curriculum day in and day out, and exceptional classes in the elective field that allow students to be individuals and personalize their learning on their path to college and career readiness. I thank you for taking a risk two years ago on a young administrator and an even bigger risk today for a very large position. I assure you, I am ready to accept the challenge and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
So, thank you for accepting our challenge and we're thrilled to have you back. And we're glad to see all of you have been there for us. Thank you. Alright, so we'll move on to our profiles in professionalism. It's just one great celebration after another.
So, the profiles in professionalism is certainly one of the highlights of the year when staff, all staff, have an opportunity to nominate and recognize some outstanding members of the school community for their efforts, their hard work, and of course, their compassion working with our students and families every day. It is so wonderful to see such a great turnout this evening, post-storm, on behalf of these well-deserving staff members. Let me just tell you a little bit about the process. Names will be read by me and by our Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Doggill. When a recipient's name is called, please come forward. We will read a few highlights from the nomination. Dr. Ku will then present you with your award, and Rebecca Verlinsites will shake your hand on behalf of the Board Ed as we line up. So, we'll start with our first recipient. Congratulations to Carmella Aladeo. Carmella was hired in 1993 as Director of Technology. She was nominated by Carlin Gaines. Carlin noted that Carmella has been with the district since the inception of the technology department and is responsible for everything from equipment to keeping the software up and running throughout the district. She puts her priorities aside to help others and works endless hours, and I can attest to that, to keep the district running as well as helping the town when problems arise. Carmella is a person that everyone in the district depends on, as she can juggle many tasks at the same time, doing it all, of course, with a great big smile. She works tirelessly, is dedicated, and of course, most deserving of this award. Congratulations. Our next recipient is Gina Capelli. Gina was hired in 2015 as a kindergarten teacher at Holly and moved to grade one for the 2016-17 school year. She was nominated by Deborah Lubin-Pond. Debbie said that Gina has brought a lifetime of innovative ideas that have inspired students, staff, and families. One is a celebration of excellence, which involves the entire school enjoying together in an assembly several times a year to highlight academic, musical, and artistic talents from each grade level to our school family to enjoy and learn from. Gina goes out of her way to help others, and the climate in her classroom is a true joy. She is humble, kind, and an exceptional teacher and person. She is a gift to the Newtown district and to Holly School. Congratulations, Carmella. Our next recipient is Bonnie Hart. Come on up, Bonnie.
Bonnie was hired in August of 2008 as a grade eight math teacher at Newtown Middle School, and then became the math coordinator in 2015. She was nominated by Michelle Halli. Michelle says Bonnie is an exemplary educator who strives daily to provide each student with the tools either she needs to be successful. She inspires everyone to be better educators. She works with students every day during her lunch and frequently stays after school for those who need additional help. She is a champion for students and individualizes her instruction so that all students are able to learn the best to the best of their ability. She is detail-oriented, meticulous, organized, and conscientious, and a role model for all educators in Newtown. Congratulations, Bonnie.
Our next recipient is Michelle Histovich.
Michelle was hired in August of 1988 as a high school and elementary music teacher. She became a director of music in 1995, and in August of 2017, became our first district K-12 director of visual and performing arts. She was nominated by both Tina Jones and Jeanne Griffin-Walter. Tina said Michelle is dedicated and works diligently to support the music, art, and theater departments. She is understanding and kind, nonjudgmental, a talented musician, and an exceptional teacher. Michelle works behind the scenes organizing concerts, musicals, plays, and art shows, as well as facilitating PLCs for staff and attending numerous conferences, all that support the arts. Most recently, she was instrumental in coordinating the major project design for the new high school auditorium. She handles her enormous responsibilities with professionalism, integrity, and grace. And for Michelle, it is always about what is best for all students. Jeanne said Michelle has been her supervisor the past three years in her position as elementary art teacher. Her support of all of the arts, advice as an administrator, and her willingness to roll up her sleeves shows her dedication to the district. Michelle is a professional with a passion for education. Congratulations, Michelle.
Our next recipient is Kenneth Budinski. Come on up, Kenneth.
Kenneth was hired in January of 2017 as custodian at Sandy Hook School. He transferred to Newtown High School in 2017, and he was nominated by science teacher Eric -- sorry, by Eric Holzgrube, not a science teacher. He's never gonna let me live that one down. Eric said Kenneth's presence was immediately felt by the quality of his work at Newtown High School. Aside from the general improvements to the halls and classrooms, he turned a disorganized space into a productive work area. He takes care of the business department classrooms, as well as so many others throughout the school. And if students or teachers leave something behind, he is always sure to find its owner. Kenneth is friendly and communicates well with everyone. He cares, and it shows. Congratulations, Kenneth.
Our next recipient is Sally Lynch. Come on up, Sally.
Sally was hired in September of 1994 as a middle school guidance aide. She worked in the middle school lieutenant's office, special education data entry from '97 to 2013, and is the special education coordinator. She was nominated by Bonnie D. Lorenzo. Bonnie noted that Sally has worked for the pupil services department for more than 20 years and has worked effortlessly to help anyone that needs assistance. She always takes the extra step to ensure the efficient and smooth coordination of the very important record keeping and state recording, which is really and truly the backbone of the department for both students and staff. Her meticulous work keeps the special education department running smoothly every day. She greets everyone with a warm and positive attitude and is a true professional. Congratulations, Sally.
Our next recipient is Susan Small. Come on up, Susan.
Susan was hired in September of 2001 as a data clerk at Newtown Middle School. She became the guidance secretary at the middle school in August of 2006, and she was nominated by both Tom Einhorn and Jim Ross. Tom said Sue's positive attitude is only matched by the quality of her work, which is exceptional. She goes above and beyond with whatever assignment she is given. She is smart, articulate, a creative problem solver, and above all, is a kind and caring person. Sue is our go-to person for many things and is an exceptional professional. Jim said Sue has a calm demeanor and friendly spirit and a problem solver. She has proven to be kind and helpful to students and their families. Her positive nature, efficiency, professionalism, and attention to detail are just a few attributes that make her such a vital part of Newtown Middle School. Congratulations, Susan.
So, next, we have congratulations to Nurse Sally Cox.
So, Sally was hired in 1988 as the nurse at both St. Rose and Newtown Middle School. She transferred to Sandy Hook School in 1997. She was nominated by her principal, Dr. Kathy Gombos. Dr. Gombos stated that Sally has been a kind and reliable presence during her 21 years at Sandy Hook School. She is soft-spoken and has the uncanny ability to discern the difference between true illness and symptoms brought on by math and reading. She manages her considerable workload alone and works tirelessly to attend to the individual needs of our students, as well as communicating with parents when needed. Sally is a reliable member of the staff, and she doesn't leave each day until all students are safely on their buses. Our students are well-pared for by Nurse Cox, and it has been an honor to work with her. Congratulations once again to Sally.
And congratulations to Michelle Holden-Bukhara. Would you like to come up?
Michelle was hired in 1994 as a sixth-grade teacher at Newtown Middle School, and she later moved to Reedham to Media School. She was nominated by her colleague Sarah Straight. Sarah said that Michelle always maintains a high level of professionalism. In Michelle's 35 years of teaching, she has gotten veteran-veter each year. Her students are welcomed into an environment where every student is important and is recognized. Her students are engaged and work hard to reach the high standards that Michelle has set. She is always trying to improve her practice to benefit students' learning. She is presently a member of the district's social studies committee, and over the years she has also helped to write curriculum and assessments in language arts. She is committed to improving the learning of Newtown students each and every year. Congratulations again to Michelle.
Pardon me, I won't say this one in Espanol, but congratulations to Marian Guligowski. So, that is the teaser, and I'm going to hear why. Marian was hired in 2006 as a point five kindergarten teacher at Sandy Hook School. In 2010, she became a full-time kindergarten teacher at Head of Meadow. She was nominated by her colleague Lisa Diaper. Lisa stated that Marian is often heard saying, "Teaching is not a job, it is a calling." She inspires everyone with her kindness, her perseverance, and her passion for teaching. She makes sure that every student works to his or her full potential, and she also makes each student feel loved and accepted. And I see. Marian is fluent in Spanish as well. She was instrumental in getting our elementary Spanish program started, and she continues to collaborate with the program staff. Marian is our kindergarten grade leader at Head of Meadow and is extremely supportive. She initiated our kindergarten project that will enhance science curriculum at the school. This project gives students a chance to create a functional garden and to serve our community by producing food to donate to local food banks. Congratulations once again, Marian. Congratulations to Heather Lucien. Will you please come join?
And Heather was hired in 1997 as a school psychologist at Middlegate School. She was nominated by Marlene Bucci. Marlene said that although she submitted the nomination for Heather, the Middlegate Guidance Committee, which includes John Sullivan and Melissa Arsenal, also was in support of her nomination. Heather is able, adept, competent, experienced, and she epitomizes the term professionalism in the educational setting. She's a contributing member to many teams and committees at Middlegate School, and Heather supports students throughout the day, and she serves as a resource source to her colleagues. Outside of the school day, she facilitates professional development for the special education department and the support staff. Heather is a leader amongst her colleagues and administrators across the district who respect and value her opinion and expertise. Congratulations, Heather.
Our next recipient will have her award accepted on her behalf by Dr. Kathy Gombos, who's her principal. And this is our congratulations going to Deborah Pizzani.
Deborah was hired in 1998 as a parent educator at Sandy Hook School. She was nominated by Nancy Duck and Kathleen Hoy. Nancy -- excuse me, Nancy Duckey. Nancy Duckey said that Ms. Pizzani is an essential part of the kindergarten team at Sandy Hook School, and she is also a valued member of the extended school year program for special education in Newtown. Deborah has provided support and guidance to everyone, from veteran teachers to brand-new teachers. Kathleen Hoy says that she has worked with Ms. Pizzani for the past five years as a kindergarten parent, and she always has been a very important part of the team. Deborah performs her duties with the utmost professionalism, always thinking of students first while giving them the confidence to persevere. She is dependable and always can be counted on to support teachers and students. Nancy and Kathleen both noted that Deborah Pizzani's actions on 12/14 were heroic and exemplified her extraordinary commitment, her dedication, and her support for the teachers and students. And keep congratulations once again to Deborah Pizzani.
And next, we have congratulations for Sarah Woods.
Sarah was hired in 2005 as a special education teacher in the preschool program. She was nominated by Kara Kowalczek, a preschool parent. Kara said that Sarah is a dedicated and compassionate professional in the preschool program. That's a lot of "yes." She feels that through Sarah's support and dedication, her son has grown tremendously. Sarah fosters a classroom community where children thrive across the board academically, and she has created a culture that ensures continued development for children's social and emotional learning needs. Sarah goes above and beyond expectations on a daily basis in her preschool classroom. Mrs. Kowalczek says, "I thank her for sending my son home each day with a smile." Congratulations again to Sarah.
So, I am so glad that we're here at 7:30 on a Tuesday night, and just a week ago, this would not have happened for sure. And I'm so glad to see so many people out and celebrating, all of our great staff, the teachers, and everybody who helps make our school district as great as it is. So, I appreciate that, and I hope you all will help us celebrate by having some refreshments, and we'll take a few minutes break before we continue in our meeting. Thank you.
Alright, so I will entertain a motion that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of May 1st, 2018, a high school field trip to Bryan University, resignations for retirement of Sarita Chandler and Emily Smith, and a correspondence report. Dan Pizzani makes a move's motion. It may be for seconds. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? I oppose. Motion passes again. And with that, we move on to public participation. So, very public participation, the Board welcomes commentary from the public. We request that the speakers be respectful, refraining from referencing specific persons, avoid repetition of comments made by other speakers, and limit comments to less than two minutes. The Board of Education does not discuss personnel items with public, including complaints against any employee of the Board reputation, regardless of whether or not the employee is referenced by name or any other identifiable attribute. If you desire more information or answers to specific questions, please complete the citizen's request for information form located on the table. The great public participation will be confined to agenda items only. And the second public participation will be for agenda items as well as issues the Board wishes the Board to consider in the future. Is there anyone here who would wish to address the Board? So, again, none. We'll close out public participation. And then we'll go on to reports, starting with the chair report. So, we had a board retreat on May 5th, and it was a good time to be had by all. I think it was a very productive discussion, and I think it would be really good for us to have a follow-up in July or August. So, this one was focused on roles and responsibilities of board members, and I think it would be really good for the Board to set some goals in the future, hopefully, goals that won't be interrupted by more challenges such as storms and school cancellations. So, if board members could let me know if you plan on being here. We have one meeting in July, one meeting in August, we have two meetings in June. So, if you think that you are not going to be around for any of those meetings, could you let me know? And I think what we'll try to do is schedule it before one of those meetings, and have Nick Caruso from KIG come out and help us with that meeting. And then the June 18th Board of Education meeting has been moved to June 20th due to the middle school moving up ceremony, which is on the evening. So, that's a Wednesday evening. And then, I just, as a Tuesday after the first day of back at school, I want to just let, just make a statement about the appreciation for all the backbreaking, hazardous, and exhausting work that our town employees, emergency responders, state workers, tree crews, and line workers have done for the town to get us back into school. And also, I want to express my appreciation for the coordinated efforts of the First Electman's Office, the Police Department, the Highway Department, our transportation personnel, and our district central office staff to get our schools back in session. But most of all, I wanted to thank Dr. Rudby for her hard work in coordinating and addressing every issue as they come up, whether it was responding to unanticipated bus stop changes, thinking about families who are living in temporary housing, meeting with the emergency operations team, or working with the state and staff to find creative solutions to end our school year at a reasonable time. I'm not sure the state is so appreciative of creative solutions, but she certainly has come up with some. And I know that she spent countless hours to ensure that the schools and students are able to safely return to our schools, and I appreciate that, and the board members and the community appreciate that as well. So, with that, hold on to Mr. Pizzani.
Thank you, Dr. Ku. As you can imagine, it has certainly been a challenging week, but I wanted us to be aware of those who not only lost power, but personal property as well. We were able to get into school today, and that was a relief for everyone. I know it's been a very stressful week, and I know the road, still the few that have challenges even up through this morning and late this afternoon, will continue to improve by the end of tonight and throughout the week. But again, I wanted to thank, as Dr. Ku mentioned, everyone for their patience so that students arrive safely to school, and that includes All-Star and our Newtown police and town employees and highway. Without them, we would not have been in school today, so I want to publicly recognize all the hard work and the efforts, including others, who has been working around the clock at not just Newtown, but other towns. I live in Oxford, and I can tell you, it was a disaster there after the tornado touched down there as well, so I know how hard they're working. Currently, I wanted to just talk about the last day of school for all will be June 26th. I did put out communication on this. The last three days of school will be June 22nd, 25th, and 26th, and they will all be half-days. Our high school graduation date, as I put out in communication, will remain the same, June 18th, and our middle school graduation date also remains the same on June 19th. Both of those days, the 18th and the 19th, will be half-days for both the middle and the high school students, and that is so they can get out and get to their graduations on time. The high school will then continue their normal final exam schedule. Again, those are all half-days throughout the week, from the 19th through the 22nd, with the 25th and the 26th as makeup days only. There was some talk about, and I just wanted to bring this up, and I know it's been out on social media, some parents have questioned, could we get a waiver so we don't have to go right through to the 26th of June? But I will tell you that those waivers only get granted if you are at the absolute end of June, so that would be June 29th, which is the last day of the month, and you are under the 180 days. And I know other towns may or may not get waivers, but you can't even put in for it unless you're at that point. And fortunately for us, we are not. So, I just wanted to make a point of that because I know that was a question that came up. Other details about the end of the year days and the expectations for students and staff will be communicated as we move closer. Again, if any parents or community members have questions, they can certainly contact me at Central Office or any of the building principals, and they too will be putting out information so that it's very clear. Alright, moving on, after much reflection and work on the very real challenges that I outlined at a previous board meeting regarding our alternative plan related to school start time next year, it became clear to us that we needed to look in another direction. So, I began a dialogue with some of our school leaders, members of our teachers' union and parent unions. and parent unions, to continue discussion about the logistics related to an alternative plan for the school's start and transportation, mainly for all of our elementary schools and Reed. Some concerns still existed around staffing, and this was mainly around the elementary teachers who this year were in the classroom earlier to monitor their students, because obviously they were getting off the buses earlier than they had in previous years. So we talked about some of the issues, like, for example, hiring, the number of pairs we might need, school space in many of the elementaries were still problematic, as well as a host of other concerns with the number of students who would be getting off buses. We just simply wanted to make sure that whatever plan we do implement next year was safe, and it really truly was a viable plan for all of our elementary students and, of course, our staff. We did reach an understanding with the teachers' union, which we will keep much of what has been implemented this year, both at Reed and at the elementary schools. They will continue with the same schedules they have this year, and that means start and end times. Sandy Hook will reverse the morning drop-off to align with the other schools and drop-off first at Sandy Hook. We also have an extra bus for each of the elementaries in the afternoon, and this will further help to reduce the number of students on the shuttles. But most importantly, this plan will include teachers continuing to greet their students at 8:45 at the elementary level in their classrooms in the morning. As part of our agreement with members of the teachers' union, elementary teachers will continue to monitor students in the morning, and specialist teachers will continue to monitor, as they did this year, the students as one of their duties at the end of the day during dismissal. I know President of the Union, Tom Karowski, and this entire executive board worked diligently along with all of us to make this work on behalf of our students and staff. I know Tom would have been here this evening to speak about the process, but could not be here. We worked together along with the Board last Friday, the Executive Board of the Union, for more than two and a half hours to really think this one through and come up what we felt was a reasonable and sustainable school start time plan at the elementary and Reed levels. Much of this, when appropriate, will be communicated via the school principal's parents before the start of the next school year. And again, I wanted to thank all of the administrators who had input into this, working with the parent union, but especially to all of the teachers as part of the teachers' union, who showed their professionalism in finding solution in the best interest of all of our students. I wanted to also talk about the Newtown Sandy Hook Community Foundation. They have solicited input from the community for over the last five years through a survey to assess the evolving needs of school and community members impacted by the tragedy of 1214 in order to continue to make well-informed funding recommendations and decisions, especially for the support of everyone in the community. The results of their annual survey have been helpful in their plans to support everyone in the community, and the next one they would be sending out would be coming out, hopefully this week, which will be sent to all families in the district. Our Rauli Panorama survey was sent out in March and April. This is a district-wide survey. The survey focuses on climate and leadership and professional learning, while the parent survey focuses on school fit, climate, and safety, as well as barriers to parent engagement and connections they feel to the schools. For the first time this year, the survey also included a social-emotional component for all of our students. I think this is really exciting for us. This will provide district leadership with important information related to students' growth mindset, their self-management, social awareness, as well as learning strategies that will be useful in supporting our students. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Reddick.
Thank you.
Just moving very past, anybody have any questions on the Chair Report? So I, we can go back to that. Did anybody have any questions on the Chair Report? It's convenient for me to just say, yep, no questions. And does anybody have any questions for the Speaker?
When you spoke about the last days of school, I just want to go back to the half-days. So the half-days will just be the last three days of school, so that Friday, Monday, and Tuesday?
Yes.
So the rest of the week, except for middle school and high school, will be full day?
Yes, but just remember, the middle school has just one extra half-day on the date that they're graduating, which is the 19th. They go back to full days until they catch up with the last three.
Okay, thank you. And then the results of the Panorama survey, is that something that you share with the board?
Yes, yes.
It's not so much a question. I just wanted to thank you publicly for the work that you did, and obviously thank the unions for the work they did coming to the table to come up with a creative solution. I know that, you know, sometimes we make decisions that may not be the most popular, and then we expect you all to come up with a solution to make it work. And I'm so grateful that you took the time to do that and came up with a solution that's best for kids, that everyone can agree with. So I appreciate the hard work that you all do on that.
Thank you.
Turned up the volume of the microphones. Sorry, other questions or comments? Mr. Porter?
I just want to reiterate also, the sentiment you guys said about all the work that everybody did with getting Newtown basically back online. I can thank the tireless work that everybody did from all of the private companies to all the people within all of our own, thank those volunteers and staff within our town community. It's great to see Newtown end it, so thanks again to all, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Dr. Reddick. Any other questions or comments? So I too just wanted to thank Dr. Reddick and our professionals, the teachers, the administrators, the parent educators, and the nurses, and I hope I haven't forgotten anyone, for putting the best interest of the district in the forefront of their conversation and coming to a solution. Because I recognize that this was an incredible challenge, and I appreciate that this solution addresses many of the hot points that have come up during the year and a half that we've been talking about this. So I appreciate that. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so we'll move on to committee reports. We're going to have instructions. Mr. Rose?
Okay. Great work committee math, Chris Cantor, DJ Nuckus, and David Roach, and Shalton. Chris Cantor, the head of the Science Department. At the high school, gave an update on Introduction to Engineering Design, consisting of 32 students this year. Enrollment has dropped to 12 for next year, possibly due to the fact that two new courses, aerospace, the third course in the series, and biomedical courses were offered. So the diversification, everybody. We also spoke of reevaluating the current criteria and recommendations in math and science to take these courses, so that children who don't quite make the grade and have a teacher recommendation to do it will be given the opportunity to possibly take the course. So all those responsible for trying to institute this will be working the rest of this year to try to see if those kinds of changes can go into effect. So, what a good place there. Do you want to add anything to this?
Yes, so you mentioned, very true, that it's got 12 students in it this year with the intro of Engineering Design, but I just wanted to emphasize that when we talk about the diversification, we're looking at 35 some odd extra kids in these particular science pathways, so that just diversification is very powerful.
Question? Ms. Garrett?
We spoke about this, and I think even here, where I was, I just wanted to restate my belief that it should be hopefully available to more kids, and it sounds like they're working on that, so I applaud that. I just want to make sure that we offer these wonderful opportunities to as many students as possible.
Dr. Reddick might have something to say too, because she was present at the meeting with us. In terms of opening up to children, one of the things that is, as you say, being worked on is that science is really very strong when they pitch to the CNI community that we need to change the level of the grade that qualifies someone to get in, as you've heard John report. But the other thing is, particularly with the biomedical tech that we went to visiting committee to go see several months ago, we've seen that as a model that is open to everyone, you know, and that's what made Dr. Reddick interested in that. I won't speak for you, I'll let you talk more about that, but I think the New York High School Principal, right, that's one of the things that really did make it for you.
One of the things we discussed, and I think we had a board of that discussion about this, and opening it up to more students, so we actually got together and decided that while it started as co-op, and I'm talking about the engineering, we started to look at things like biomedical, which is far more of a survey-type course, so it's open to everyone at all levels. We also went back to the engineering and said, you know what, you don't really need honors biology necessarily to do well, but we wouldn't know that until we gather data because that's typically where it was in other school, in other school districts, and as part of the program as a whole. So that's one of the things we're going to do right now to open up so that we can fill the gaps, I think, in the enrollment right now that's currently happening. So that may raise that level that we were talking about, but also the diversification, the biomedical and others that we want, we're going to open it up to everyone, so it won't be just, you need to be in honors level in order to get in. And I think you're going to see, first of all, I think we have, you know, many more sections just starting out. So the engineering, when you look at all the sections put together though, there are a great number of students that are really taking advantage of all of these courses. So I don't think it's, you know, I don't want to sound like it went down, it's just they're looking at a variety of pathways, and now they have more opportunities, not just engineering.
Thank you. On that note, are we doing anything to promote these and make sure that the student body is aware of these offerings so that nobody misses it because they didn't know it existed?
That was another discussion that the CNI, and certainly Mrs. Doppel would speak to it as well, but we actually decided that, you know, we need to get into the classrooms more so that, and we want to bring students, because students listen to students. You know, if you have an assembly, you mention it, or even during homeroom time, or whatever it is, it really wasn't getting enough of a play as it should. So counselors will be bringing students down so they can speak, and these are future aspirations that we have to make sure that we really get that word out. Do you want to speak more?
No, I'm sorry.
Let me just say one other thing to work. We also spoke about busing the children per cluster up to the high school.
Yes, thank you. You reminded me of that. This was an idea I had even when I was principal last year, that we really didn't do, I thought, enough of an orientation. We have the orientation for the middle school students with their parents one night, one evening, but it would be nice to have them come over in the daytime, get them into classrooms, have them, you know, walk around with students, see what's going on at various levels, to get some hands on. So I think that's, and that's another place where we can speak about those particular classes. They'll actually go in and see them, rather than just get a flyer or hear about it from an adult.
Jean, great work. Speaking here, but the biomedical courses are filled.
John Welpin notes, my recollection is that they had three sections of that coming, and they have two, but one or two of the biomedical. In my head, when I went through it, I thought I was looking at almost 50 kids. Forty-eight, forty-four something. We're on the right path, and I think particularly when we think about the discussion about robotics that you set up in this school, and when you think about the 5, 6, 10 in Reed, we've got a strong continuum, I think, coming, and we can see whenever we celebrate our top graduates every year, it's down to the number of students in the sciences.
That was a big, I'll insert a personal comment here, because I was there for the meeting, it was a robust discussion about what the Board had indicated when we had had the presentation previously, and there was, I mean, it was a full hour of discussion about how we could address some of the issues. I'm sorry, Mr. Porter?
It's sort of a banter at the end, but I was just curious, I assume you have the numbers of kids that signed up for like the aerospace class and all of them, and are they all, like, the children that wanted to get, did everybody get in?
I believe that at this point, no one's been turned out, and we're opening up sections based on the number of students, because again, some of those courses have not run because they're the next, you know, step in that program, and the biomedical is bringing, we haven't had that before. So we wanted to just open it up and see how many sections do we need. With the engineering, we sort of know because we've had it before, so while that went down a bit, it's because they're looking in the next level of engineering and also biomedical, which again, took them in a different direction.
And just sort of feedback too about, you know, getting awareness to the kids, maybe it is already, not just, you know, in regards to the actual new programs, you know, maybe they get a separate promotion as opposed to just, hey, signing up for classes, you know, like, here's all the new things that we're offering next year to the kids, which is a way to, you know, promote it that way, so that the kids sort of maybe go through their year a little bit more on it, knowing that it's new, not just, hey, sign up to their classes sort of thing.
I also, you know. I also think what Mrs. Doppel just mentioned is very important in all of this, the robotics at the middle school and starting a stem at Reed, because those students are going to hear about it and know that this, you know, that pathway can continue from the fifth and sixth grades all the way through high school.
Any other questions, comments?
I have another thing to say. There's, there's complete awareness that the message at the middle school has to be relatively clear for these children to know what's going on at the high school. So we're working on making sure that the counselors have speaking to one another, that the math and science teachers at the middle school understand what's happening at the high school, and then of course, bringing them up to the high school will also help. So there's awareness that we are aware that the more these children know what's available to them early on in eighth grade is key.
And now that we have Brett Nichols as our Director of Guidance, he's really working with the counselors in ways, that we have, really have that same communication, and I think that's really going to help us in the future.
Okay, that was my long report, sounds like maybe we should revisit that sometime in the fall. Were there any other committee reports?
The Policy Committee meeting didn't meet once since our last meeting, we were supposed to meet again yesterday, but in, in policy committee fashion, we had a term, as we said. So, but we did meet on the 17th, no, the night, right? Yeah, okay, sorry. I lost the week there. And we continued to go through the 5,000 series with some additional 6,000 and out-of-order policies that needed to be addressed, and I have a record that we did move forward. The Service Manual and Policy, which will be coming to you at our first meeting, which I guess is our next one, along the four other policies. guess is our next one, along with all of the policies, right? So we have some other series policies coming to, but we continued to move through the five thousand series and talked about things like student safety and use of technology, off-school grounds misconduct, bus conduct, student driving, parking, so we're really doing this as quickly as we can, and one day we'll get to five thousand series. But for now, just look forward to the first review on those five half-hour policy items.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments? All right. Another committee report.
CIP facilities and finance met on the eighth. We met, we did a pre, we had a presentation from Witsen's Food Service, because we have to approve the renewal of that contract, which the subcommittee moved forward and will be coming next meeting, I believe, June fifth. We also met to discuss the CIP, both what'll, what next, not the eighteen, nineteen will look like, but the nineteen, twenty projects will be, and start a discussion around what you know sees us doing in period number five.
I noticed that the board of finance has the CIP, especially on their agenda, I don't know, do you know anything about that?
Yeah, I don't know, that came us after, I didn't even know if it was after our meeting.
Is it some information?
Just take these things out. The day after our meeting, I had received a communication from Bob Tate indicating that the board of finance or selectmen wanted to move to a ten-year CIP, so they were suggesting identifying additional projects that could be included. And I had sent that to the committee, and we didn't have a chance to discuss that since then, we'll pick it up on our next meeting. I'm not sure that we're going to be in a position to really come up with some solid numbers for those type of things, I mean, we're really going to have to scratch the surface to find out what types of things, I think it'd be things like parking lots that need to be resurfaced, replaced drainage that needs to be put, so we're not going to have time to do any type of engineering analysis to really, all we can do is probably identify those things, move them out. It'll be, it'll be a new process to make it a ten-year plan, and we'll just have to develop it as we go along. It's clear that the first year and the second year are the most important for CIP planning purposes for a town, this is just a kind of, we've got a big perspective of everything that could be on the horizon, so I think we'll move in that direction, but it's going to take a little while to get some numbers.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? Any other committee reports, liaison updates?
I'm sorry, I feel it's important to mention that Edamendo, for the last few weeks, has been working on their mural, their Ventavosa mural. I was there at the beginning of the month to make some tiles with my, my youngest will be in class of twenty thirty-one. So, but we made them, they were painting that, you saw the picture of the in-progress mural today, and it looks nice. We are the, as far as we know, the only school in Connecticut that has the tree mural on our building, so it's coming together, it looks good, and hopefully, I'll work and get down there and see it when it's finished.
Good, thank you. Any other liaison updates? All right, we'll move on to student agenda reports.
Good evening. In the companies that need to accept the high school will be presenting their spring concerts back in the auditorium. Choir, band, and orchestra scheduled to perform this Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday will be rescheduled likely for dates in June due to the storm this past week. Students are using this extra time in their music courses to put the finishing touches on their pieces for the concerts.
Over the duration of the past two weeks, AP exams have been conducted for students taking AP classes. For these students, they have spent much of the year preparing for their exams and achieving high school or can earn their credit for a similar class in college. Disruptions in the AP schedule due to the recent storm have forced tests to run into this week, with statistics, language and composition, Italian, Latin, and macroeconomics exams to be conducted through Friday.
Cancelled due to the weather this past Thursday, May seventeenth, the World Language Honor Society will be holding their induction ceremony at NHS at a date in the near future. Students apply to be a part of this honor society, writing essays about a given world language-related topic, and putting together an application package. Those who were selected will now formally be introduced into the organization at this ceremony.
After the storm left many without power and ready to source of food, the NHS culinary program stepped up to provide for the community. Culinary opened a soup kitchen providing various soups, breads, and beverages to those who need them. Volunteers worked to cook food while handing it out in the culinary area near Ucapham High School. This serves as yet another example of a commitment to service fire NHS students.
Many of the clubs at the high school are wrapping up, holding their last events and beginning preparations for next year. The Hawks Honor Association, dedicated to service activities and events at the high school, is currently accepting applications from freshmen, sophomores, or juniors for next year. Best Buddies is holding their annual best buddies prom on Saturday, June second, and Unified Track and Field held their big meet of their season on May sixteenth in the Blue and Gold Stadium, just near the field.
Although the storm may have derailed the sports schedules for many of our NHS team, it did not deter the organizers and participants of the Little Feet Meet, which ran this past Saturday, the nineteenth, in the high school gym. The event organized by NHS student Kylie Davy is, as part of her junior/senior project, gave preschool and elementary students the opportunity to showcase their athletic skills and compete across a variety of events. These included relays both on foot and on scooter, as well as a variety of field events that were coordinated and directed by volunteer staff, students, and families from NHS. The meet was a huge success and a blast for everyone involved, and it serves as a great example of the high school's standing commitment to service despite the storm.
Thank you. Any other questions? So are we in the midst of conference finals for athletics, is that, was that affected by the storm damage? You know, Mr. Edwards, you do track.
Yeah. The, as far as I know, we were the only ones affected by the storm. Our championship got pushed to tomorrow, and other schools have been running there. I know La Crosse has been started there as their receiver housing, I'm not sure.
So it all carries on.
Yeah. I agree with that.
All right, very good, well, good luck tomorrow. All right, thank you very much. As always, you're welcome to stick around, or if you have, if you examine something tomorrow, excuse yourselves. So next on the agenda, we have the financial report, so I will entertain a motion that the Board of Education approved the financial report for the month ending April thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Kuson makes a motion, Mr. Aaron takes a second. Mr. Kowski.
The month of April, during the month of April, the board spent approximately seventy-three million dollars, three point eight on salaries, two point three on benefits, and simply it's our final installment. Two point two million goes to self-insurance fund and balance at one point two for all other projects. This is the same as where we were last year at this time, the same level of expenses, so it indicates that we're on track, there's nothing unusual with what's happening right now. The overall projected balance has improved over the past few months, and some, while some accounts are still experiencing some financial stress. Salary and benefits accounts are in good condition, and we expect the positive trend to continue through the balance of the year, partially due to having two less school days that we have, two less student days, two less tutors, less substitutes, you know, daily costs that won't be accruing of that, so we're looking at about forty thousand dollars in the end of the day going to those accounts. Professional services, we're experiencing stress there, we have about eighteen thousand dollars or more this month, the combination of legal services and professional services for, for youngsters. Purchase property services, there's, there's been uptick in that because of emergency building repairs, we completely spent the full emergency repair budget at this point, but we have enough money in equipment repairs that hopefully it'll offset that as we move towards the end of the year, so we will see a deficit showing up in emergency repairs, I guess it's probably going to be in the twenty, thirty thousand dollars, but it's not something which you can handle with balances that we're going to have to repair accounts. Spy accounts, those will be very similar to last month, depending on how we get through the balance of the year with what the remaining needs are, that could produce some additional money there as well. There's no change in the offsetting revenue, we're still carrying the numbers that we had on the previous report. We're expected to receive our excess cost grant by the end of this month, so when that comes in, I'll give a new estimate as to what the financial balances are. If, if the balance is a little bit off, because the state requires more money for other school districts, we should be okay with the balance that we have now overall, we're at seventy-five thousand dollars, so I am not worried about that at all anyways, so. And in line with what we've done in the past, on the next report, whatever balance is available, be it seventy or hundred thousand dollars, whatever it is, I'll be recommending with that, we put it in, I'm lapsing with that, so we establish the fact that it's an anticipated amount of money that's going to go into that account, so that when we get to the final report, we can sprout some. So if there's any questions, we have the answer.
That's good. Mr. Delia.
Ron, excuse me, Ron, are there any unexpected expenses, major expenses to this term?
Nothing that, that really stands, stands out. I mean, the schools weren't damaged in any way because of the storm, and over the years we've been very diligent about putting our trees, so nothing's hit the, hit the schools, we've had no load flecks, so we've saved some next year bus, hopefully, and the lights on.
Any other questions? All right. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. I will move on to entertaining motion that the Board of Education approved the continuation of the school activities fund accounts. Mr. Kuson makes a motion, Mr. Aaron takes a second. So this is something that we do on an annual basis, based on a policy that we have, and I'm looking at right now, policy thirty-four fifty-three, so this is something we do annually. I don't know, did, was there any background information that we needed?
I was going to say, it is a policy requirement, we do this every year about this time, you have the data, it says it has a charge for the first release accounts that we're talking about here. These are in line with previous analysis, so then the principal and its principal secretary are the leaders of the account. Account statements come to the, to the business office on a monthly basis, and we reconcile and make sure everything's...
So are there any questions? Sensing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So we'll move on to minutes of May fifth, we'll entertain a motion that the Board of Education approved the minutes of May fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Kuson makes a motion, Mr. Aaron takes a second. Check any discussion, questions? All those in favor? Aye. And none of special, Mr. Corleones, everybody else approves, motion passes. Now move us to our public participation. Public participation, is there anybody who would like to address the board?
Yes.
We'll take this microphone, and if you could just let us know who you are and your address, we'll maybe set up there.
Okay. Hi, my name's Christine, I live in twenty-fourth Boulevard, and I'm a daughter of a daughter in high school. I have a question, is mine at the high school.
So just to make, to, for clarification, we don't do a back and forth exchange during public participation, you're welcome to give us your questions, maybe afterwards, if it's something we can answer, we can approach.
It is my understanding that finals end on the twenty-first of June, for the, for the high school students. So therefore, there's an additional day for makeups on the twenty-second of June, then they have the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth. For those who have planned vacations, what is their option?
All right, so we'll take that question into consideration. I mean, I think that we can probably get you an answer after the meeting, I think that some of them may have been answered in the previous discussion, but we'll get to you after the meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted, because there's lots of families out there that I know with the same concern, you know, vacation.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board, give us a question to answer? Now sensing none, we'll close out public participation. entertaining motion adjourned. Mr. Kuson, Mr. Corleones, second, getting all those in favor. Motion passes unanimously, adjourned.